Committee meeting at 6:30 and a sewer committee meeting at 6:00. I apologize, that ordinance should say appointment.
I had to call and check to make sure I wasn't missing anything.
Who was the chairman of the appointments committee? You have an update?
We have resolved afterwards, we have two candidates to fill vacancies. Karen Johnson for Conservation Committee and Seth Lambert for Parks and Recreation. And as well as the rest of the slate, we'll put those on the resolve.
Okay, item B, Sewer Committee update?
Oh, we had a new proposed contract from Maine Water. In reference to, with the new facility, we need to add a Class III operator. During our discussion, we decided to bring that to the council. Recommend that we go into the new contract with them.
Any questions? If not, we'll go on to item eight, agenda items. First one being to adopt resolve R. 2017-57 to approve receipt or payment for the town's share of the Perk Limited partnership, which is being sold back to Perk at a closing to occur on or before April 30th. Susan?
The town received information from both Perk and the MRC in regard to the equity investment in the ownership of Perk that's held by member communities. And both Perk and the MRC are encouraging communities to exercise their put option, which is the ability for the communities to sell their share of this equity interest in the Perk ownership back to Perk for, there was an amount negotiated as part of a settlement between Perk and the MRC at which this equity value was established. The town's share is based on its tonnage commitment to that over time. The town's equity interest in Perk is $23,891.71. And if you exercise this option, honor before, if you exercise this option, you'll receive those funds back to the town of Bucksport, honor before the April 18 closing of that relationship.
What happens if we don't do that?
You don't do that? If you don't do it voluntarily, Perk has the right to call that.
So they'd own the money?
What's that?
They'd own the money then.
They'd have to, no, to call and force you to do, this is a, the put option is where you voluntarily agree to do that, but they have the right to, if you don't do that, they have the right to...
So the money's ours regardless?
That's correct.
There's no change in value between now and then.
No, the value of the...
Sitting with some funds someplace.
The value of this ownership totally is $1,500,000. And this is the breakdown for what everybody's share, no matter how you do it, that value does not go up or down.
I think that's what I was getting asked. Can we leave it there?
No, there's no, it's not going to gain a value. It's not a stop.
All right, fair enough. I hear a put's and calls.
Orland is on.
Just keep it there.
Motion to approve?
We have motion to second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? Yes, sir, come up and speak.
Jim Marks in East Bucksport. I thought we had like $400,000 or something vested in that place. Is that anything to do with what we're talking about here?
No. The amount of money that you're talking about that's the part of the tip fee stabilization fund that's owned by all the communities, that's $25 million, is separate. This is only the equity interest, the interest in the physical plant at Perk that's owned, that's valued at 1.5 million, that's owned by all of the communities that have contributed over time. And that $23,891.71 is our share of that $1.5 million ownership in the physical property, not in the tip fee stabilization fund that was established over time by contracts with Bank of Hydra, with Amera for the sale of electricity.
So that's a completely different...
That's a completely different animal.
All right, thank you.
Anything further from the council?
And that money's going to go back to the transfer station reserve account?
That would be, the location would be transfer station reserve at the time that we actually received it.
And your recommendation is to go with the put option?
If the number were going to change, or something was going to, had a likelihood of getting bigger, this is a negotiated amount between Perk and the MRC. It's not going to change.
And where is the tip stabilization account money right now?
That's with the MRC, where it will be through 2018 anyway.
All right, anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
This is the letter that the council needs to sign to authorize that. We'll start over here.
Item B, to adopt resolve R. 2017-58 to approve contracting with Maine Water Company for the oversight management of the town sewer treatment plant, collection lines, and pumping stations. We've already heard from our sewer committee chairman.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion to second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C, to adopt resolve R. 2017-56 to approve the 2017 appointments as recommended by the appointments committee.
Make a motion to approve.
We have motion to second, approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
I just wanted to add that we, there's one appointment that isn't set up yet. We're going to wait another week or two to...
The planning board vacancy one will be on the agenda for April 13.
Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item nine, resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. We have none. Item 10, approval of quitclaim deeds and discharges. First one being for Keith and Betty French, map 21, lot 37, for tax liens in 2014, 2015. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
We have motion to second, approve the quitclaim deed. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item B, quitclaim deed for Lisa Ornsby, map 32, lot 56, for 2014, 2015 tax liens. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
We have motion to second, approve the quitclaim deed. Anything further from the public? Yes, sir.
And these quitclaim deeds, is that for the town gets the property, or is it...
No, no, no.
No, we deed our interest in the property back to them.
Oh, back because they paid.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was...
Anything further from the council?
Sorry?
It's all right. It's good to ask questions. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. On to item 11, Town Manager Report, Department Head Reports.
Tax due date for the second half of property taxes for 1617 is tomorrow. Through yesterday, through March 29th, we've collected 84.7% of the total taxes assessed. And anything that's still unpaid by June 21st will have a tax lien placed on the property. Then 84.7 went up a good deal. We took in considerable money today, and tomorrow will be a big day as well. So we'll get to 92 to 94% within the next week. I'm pleased to report that we've been notified by the state of Maine that the comprehensive plan that the committee's been working on for several years is considered complete and consistent with state requirements. We'll be advertising this for public hearing for adoption by the town council. It says here at their April 13 meeting, but it will be introduced on April 13. You have to advertise for 30 days, so it will be the beginning of the first meeting in May before the public hearing can be held. But I want to thank Jeff Fitzgerald for all his work in moving this process through its various iterations over the past several years, and also to the many volunteers who have given their time, effort, and energy to this process. I will note that although the state had made some suggestions, there were no contingencies placed on it, and it was accepted as written without any changes, which is pretty unusual and very good. The manager evaluation for my first year of employment as a town employee will be at the next council meeting on April 13. Since April 1st is my employment anniversary, I'll be distributing evaluation forms for you to complete and return to the mayor by April 7th, so he can compile results prior to the meeting on the 13th. I attended a meeting of the League of Women Voters in Ellsworth on March 22nd as a speaker. I was asked to join an economics professor from the University of Maine, a town counselor from Baharbor, to talk about the subject of Two Maines, but that's not really what the discussion ended up being about, the topics. And audience questions directed to me were primarily about Bucksport was doing to rebound from the loss of the mill. It was a very positive meeting, and I've had good feedback from it. There were probably 30 people there. It was very interesting. And finally, it's been the policy of the town for many years to place sewer liens on any principal balance on an account over $2 remaining at the time the liens are due to be placed. Unlike property tax bills that are sent out just once a year, we send out sewer bills four times a year. I'm requesting that we increase that lien threshold for sewer liens from $2 to $15 before placing a lien. The placement of a lien adds over $60 to the cost of an outstanding bill. And there have been two instances recently where a lien has been placed on principal amounts of $11 or less. One was for $3.47 in principal. We always catch up on these because payments are always applied to the oldest bill first. But for somebody with a very, very small principal balance, to incur lien costs for that, anything over $2 creates more work, number one, for staff, because when you do 30-day notice liens, there's mortgage holders and all sorts of other things that get added into it. And it also causes huge aggravation on the part of customers who may have made a payment late, and what's happened is what's left is, they thought it was paid, but it was interest that had accrued. The town will always get its money, but placing liens on sewer principal balances of $2 just is, it's hard for me to defend it when people come in and are upset about it. If there was at least a threshold that was obviously not interest accrued or something else that had happened in a payment of 15 or over, that seems more reasonable to me. But it's a town policy, and I need to find out if there are any objections on the part of the council if I change this, so that our...
No disagreement here?
No disagreement here.
No disagreement.
Thank you, and I'm...
On the manager's evaluation, I would like to recommend that we hold a, on the 13th, a public comment period during the regular council meeting, and then on the actual evaluation, go into an executive session to actually do the final evaluation. Is that acceptable, everybody?
Yes.
Okay, well, so, we probably should advertise for public comment on the town manager's evaluation on the 13th. Okay, thank you very much. Financial reports.
Those were last month's. That's 2/28, not 3/28?
Why?
It's an error in the agenda? Great time to be evaluated. There you go, write it down. But if you were to look at the last agenda, the February reports are there, and I did report on them. This is where, when you copy things, and then to make sure that you...
Item 12. Item 12, set public hearing or hold public hearing and approve of any licenses or permits. We have no license or permits, but we are going to set, I guess you'd call it a public hearing, on the town manager's review on the 13th. Okay, let's go on to item 13, discussion items not on the agenda for the council or public. Let's start with the public. Any discussion items from the public? If not, any from the council?
This is the fourth meeting of the council that Mr. Key hasn't been here for. I don't know if he has personal problems or what's going on, but I think that, you know, I mean, he's here to represent the people, and he just doesn't need to be doing that. I think something ought to be checked out about that.
How you doing? My name's Bob Davis, 233 Church Road, Bucksport. And the only thing, the one I think it's had is, I chatted with Susan about it a little while ago, that Daniel at the transfer station has to be a little less confrontational with the public. There was a 14-year-old kid dropping off recyclables, and he didn't have it in the right kind of bag, and Danny went off the deep end. And this ain't the first time I've seen it happen. You know, he's, you know, he'll go, two years ago, he told this lady he couldn't help her with the TV because he'd lose his job. Some guy put cardboard on the ground. He says, "You can't put cardboard on the ground, we're going to get a $5,000 fine."
It's been addressed by the town manager.
All right, I'm just mentioning, yep. Just mentioning, I want everybody, I want it to...
All right, thank you. All right, item, okay, any more discussion items from the public? From the council? If not, we'll go on to item 14, upcoming public hearings, designation of topics for committee assignments, or scheduling of committee meetings. Let's go on to item 15, budget review. It's going to be basically protection. It'll be on police, dispatch, fire, ambulance, public safety, and utilities.
I apologize, I have a question. The school budget, was that going to be at a different meeting?
I had planned up for Mr. Booney to be here this evening, but he has a school meeting tonight too, so he will be here at the meeting on the April 13th. And we'll also be honoring the unified basketball team at the meeting on the 13th as well, so he'll be here for that. And we don't even have to have a pause in the festivities for me to go get the right files, because they're actually already on the computer tonight. Unlike the other night when we had to get the ones that were more... We're starting with police. This budget, and there are copies here for anyone in the audience to follow along with all these budgets as well, and this is supposed to be, Chief, if you would like to talk about your budget?
That is not exactly what I have in front of me, but I will go down through the police budget with you, line by line.
What's that? This is just the overview that...
That's the overview, but I have the actual budget view, the line items in it.
And everybody here does, and you have it in your...
In the Google?
Can you see, read that? Is that clear?
No, no. I can read, uh, police protection, full-time, regular... Okay, it's quite blurry. Thank you. I got two pair.
Well, set.
Floor's yours.
If you look at the beginning, you have the, what we call the O1 account, which is a regular payroll account. If you look down through there, the increases you see are by union contract, appropriations by the town. At the bottom, you do see one, and they have the appropriations for police training, buyout reserve. That's a program that, when the mayor was sitting in as the town manager at the time, we started that. And it started in 2014, I believe, and it's a six-year program to get that up to $30,000. It's a buyout for police cadets out of the academy. There's a law in the state of Maine that after so many years, you've had the 18 weeks of training, that you actually have to be bought out. So that's a program we started years ago. So any of the increases you see in those lines for personnel are basically related to union contract negotiations. The raise that was negotiated in this year's contract for the patrol division, and the sergeant, and the chief are in there also, the same percentage.
Sean, do you have a, on that annual appropriations for the buyout?
Yeah.
Where are we on the balance on that, or is that the first payment?
We started that, Davey, in 2014, which would have been fiscal year 15, and that would have been a six-year program, so in 2020, it should be maxed out on it. In the O2 account, which is the extra and overtime account, the increases there are basically just the overtime rates going up due to the increases in regular hourly wage. That is an average. So to be honest with you, at some points, depending on who's working, that's good, and at some points that's bad, but it all evens out in the end. So it's kind of figured in the middle, so to speak. You will see under there that Officer Rossell is not replaceable there, so that does not cost money. He's the SRO, that's 50% paid by the school. That's why he has no numbers beside him. So that increase, as I just said, is from union negotiations and hourly wages increases with an average for overtime. And that has to do with vacation, sick leave, staff meetings. You'll see the contract hours at the 1378 times the four hours, that's a four-hour shift every week for reserves on Mondays. That was increased by the same union contract. Chamber festivals in there. That is the average hourly overtime rate. Unscheduled overtime is basically court, things that are unforeseen, like court hearings and things of that nature. If you look down through the next line, I believe you'll see is the training payroll. There's a small increase there, this again due to hourly wages. Investigation payroll, they put no increase there.
What exactly is that, if we're paying for Winchester's salary? What is that?
Extra above and beyond his 40 hours, if we get a major investigation that he has to work extra on as a detective, it comes out of that line instead of the regular overtime line. We've had that account for, it's got to be 30-plus years now. They put extra in there for major investigations, basically what they get years ago.
Is that...
We normally never increase that line because we don't, we're over it. It's kind of an extra if needed type thing, if we get one or two major cases that he has to work a lot of overtime on.
And the reason I ask, I'm just looking across at what you've done with that in the years past, and...
We've been pretty fortunate not had to spend it.
Chief, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the TV can't hear you because you're not near a microphone.
That's the first time in my life someone's said that.
I'm sorry. But if you can come closer, I'll move that computer a little bit, and you can use that.
We can turn that the other way, that'd be good.
Is that okay? I apologize, I just checked with our sound person, and they said that we were not going out over the air with you not being by the microphone.
Are you good, Peter, on that, or? I understand what you're saying, and that is not a line. If you look back for a number of years, and you take a few...
Yeah, I mean, it's 2%, 3%, it's not much, so I'm just wondering if it's something...
It's certainly something that could be looked at if the town is willing to pay it out of the regular overtime. If we have two or three major cases, you're going to see a major haul out of that, along with vacations and sick time, but...
So I guess my question is, he, he's already listed in the overtime, and I'm just asking for my...
Yeah, no, I hear you.
So is that, is he listed in the overtime already? Is he budgeted, is that position budgeted for overtime?
Generally speaking, no. In the last year or so, we've used him sporadically, if we need him. I'll give you, for instance, this week is a prime example, but it's never happened. We've got eight people, and we've got four and a half, I will say right now, out with the flu. So we've got three and a half of us working 40 hours a week this week and filling the shifts, so this, he may have to...
Would you take that out of that line, or is that coming out of overtime?
No, that would, only investigations come out of that line, major cases.
Is there, like you said, it's been going a long time, is there a reason that you have to label it investigations, or it could just be lumped into one overtime?
I just, I think that history says that years ago, 25-plus years ago, we had a part-time detective, and that line was there. So what they did, that used to be $10,000 or $15,000, and when they first, actually, I was the one that was promoted to that position. They cut that in half with investigations because they never allowed the sergeant to work the road, any overtime shifts, and they didn't have money for investigations in the regular payroll for that person, so...
I'm just looking at your budget for easier for you. I mean, you're only spending 50, 60% of your overtime budget. You take that small number and just incorporate that and do away with it, to me, it just looks like a clean or something that we're not going to ask you questions on every year.
No, that's certainly, it's just that something's been there for 25-plus years, and something that we can certainly look at, if we wanted to put that into the other, into the overtime line or some of it.
I'm not going to beat you up, throw $3,000 where it is right now, but it's just something to think about.
That's all right. The training payroll, we just discussed. Investigations, we're on. The animal control line, you're going to see a major increase there. The animal control officer's a part-time position. He's a full-time employee in the dispatch, under Fair Labor Standards. We can pay him time and a half of minimum wage, and which we've done for many, many years. As you know, the minimum wage just went up, and so we were one of the ones hit by it. I did not suspect this at all till I was doing the budget, and looked at the budget, and said, "Wow, we do have a minimum wage employee," which I didn't think we'd have, but we do. So that increase is due to the mandate of the minimum wage. The next line down, you'll see the chief's expense has a...
Real quick, just one other one. Harbor master, why are you paying for a harbor master?
It's out of the overall budget. If you look at this up here, it's always been here, but in that overall budget, it's out of that budget. It's in the, that will, you'll see when you see the waterfront budget, the harbor master will be there.
So I shouldn't know?
I guess I don't. It's saved $1,000 right there.
I still didn't yell at him.
That's something that's always been under our...
That, that's something that's always been under our, so I'm not sure if it's for enforcement powers, Peter, but I don't... You sway him in under, under me, under the, for, for power, so I think that's why it was in our budget, has been forever. I mean, I meet with him dozen times a summer at the dock, but we don't, we've been out on the boat, but other than that, he really runs the show, but...
But it's not, it's not listed up here, so...
No, it's not on the overall budget there, it's in the waterfront.
Okay, that's what I thought it was supposed to be, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, he submitted the way it always is, I pulled it, if you look on, under harbor master in the police budget, there's a zero there. It's not that we're not gonna have one, it's just that it's not gonna be there.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You got lucky on that one, chief.
Yeah. Where were we, chief's expense, there is a small increase there. The only, the reason for that is course and seminar fees, you'll see there's a five hundred dollar fee there. Most of the courses, or the exec, executive courses run six hundred, eight hundred dollars now, so there's not enough money to begin with there, but, um, we make it through it, one way or the other, we get a few free in the last few years that I've snuck into, so...
What's other for?
Other is basically, uh, unforeseen expenses that might come out, basically. Clothing allowance, that's a union issue, union contract issue, don't believe there's any negotiated raise there at all, zero percent. Dues and travels, uh, no increase. Training expense, there was no increase. Regular mailings or postage, no increase. Animal control supplies, again, no increase. I'll note there that we're very, very fortunate. You, you will see, I'm sure the town manager sees and the mayor sees on the warrants, a few extra hours a month for his travel in his vehicle to go get food. Target, Walmart, the last twenty-plus years, um, tractor supply donated food and, we even brought food that I know of the twenty years for that animal shelter, there's been a lot of pets go through there, so, very fortunate that way. Equipment account, uh, you'll see a small increase there, that's due to increase in mandated training with tasers.
What are you carrying for, that, is that expensive?
We have the X-two. You have to, you have to train with them every year, as you know, and the training cartridges they have with them are... Well, they're, everything they do is expensive, but the training cartridges are like two dollars, last per cartridge, which is forty dollars, but then you're not guaranteed after that that the cartridge you've had in the taser is gonna work or not, and you know every year that you have a new, new cartridge in there, so... That, that is an expensive ordeal, but it's, those have worked out very well, we've had to use them very little, but when we have, have had to, they've worked out well. Parts and repair, you'll see a small increase there, um, that's basically due to tires. I, I actually have, just so you know the history, I have five units, including the ACO vehicle. I did one unit today with tires and an alignment, which was a great price at six hundred and twenty dollars per vehicle when you replace a set of tires and have a lineup. So the idea there is to do basically two and a half to three of those a year as needed only, but, um, there is a small increase in the government rate for tires, and I just actually had to do that today, so, still a good rate for four tires, but... Telephones, there was no increase there. Heating fuel at the animal shelter, we usually leave that up to the town, fuel for vehicles is up to the town.
That's a, that's a huge price in there you got for gas, I mean, over three dollars a gallon, I don't know if we're ever gonna pay over three dollars a gallon for fuel for vehicles, are we?
I've got two, two dollars and something, two fifty.
Okay.
I don't know what the, I never know, Peter, 'cause I don't know the negotiated prices to the town, so this is...
Oh, okay, no, no, never mind, you, you have at three oh seven, but then you've got the two fifty in the, in the...
And that's usually, that could change depending on what she gets for a bid.
It's the two fifty in the middle.
Do you mean numbers?
There are a lot of numbers. Uh, miscellaneous, no increase. That's basically it, for that one.
Yeah, we lost that computer picture here. There you go, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want a dispatch now there, chief?
We can, if you'd like. Everyone got that one in front of them?
The only, the only question I, the only thing we have is, dare, you still have that as a, as a line, but you're not bringing that back? I thought, I thought you talked about bringing that back.
Do have it back, but it wouldn't be an extra, because he's in the school anyway, so he's doing it during his days of school.
Okay, so that's why it's a zero in there, right?
Right, yeah.
So that, he's included in the regular peg?
Yeah.
Very good. There's no revenue generated from that either, is there, right?
No. You know, well, there's no revenue generated from the dare, but I bill the school fifty percent at the end of the year, every June.
But that's already captured anyway, it's for revenue that she puts in the revenue.
Right, yeah. Uh, and the dispatch, basically the same lines, the O-one account, which is, thank you. Which is your payroll, uh, you'll see a increase there plus step raise for an employee there, that's a union negotiated, uh, raise for them. So between the step raises and the negotiated raise, there's an increase there. It's the same thing as the patrol division or police overtime account, O-two account. There's a small increase there due to the average changing in the hourly wages. Training payroll is, uh, the O-three account is basically the same, a small increase there due to wages. Clothing account, there is no increase there, dues and travel, no increase, training expense, no increase. Office supplies, no increase, postage, no increase. Fifty-one, the equipments, maintenance and repair, you're gonna see a medium increase there, and basically that is due to... We have a net motion licenses for each one of our cruisers that I've added into the Spillman actually contract there, 'cause they go hand in hand. And, so there is a small increase in that. The other one with the voice recorder, uh, the recorder, the Exocom, uh, you'll see a thirteen hundred dollar increase there. The issue with that is that Exocom machine, when we bought it five years ago, come with a five-year warranty that we did not have to pay for. That five years is up, and we now need, need a service contract for that voice recorder. Um, I do know we're looking at phone systems and stuff, and that may change, but I believe that we should leave that in there for now, because we've had a few issues, and they won't talk to us, 'cause we don't have the service contract, 'cause the five years run out on the machine from when we bought it. So that's that increase. Telephones, no increase in...
Who do we have, who do you have, is that, is it through Fairpoint or Time Warner?
The Exocom machine is, is a private company.
No, the, the telephone itself, though.
The telephones right now are...
Is the town, is the town all in one?
We're all in one, we're all in one system, but it's, it's doing the telephone, is it, or?
It's, um, Fairpoint.
Fairpoint, yeah, Fairpoint telephone.
So all, all the, all the town businesses are all Fairpoint?
All the, all the...
Landlines?
Landlines are Fairpoint.
And the last line, miscellaneous, was no increase. And that's the basic dispatch budget.
What's the next one?
Congratulations, by the way, too, for coaching your unified team, I wanna recognize you.
That was my pleasure, thank you, it was a, a lot of fun.
Um, I, I also wanna note that the chief is starting this year, I believe, gonna be the president of the, of the main... You have several honors that you're, will be performing in this coming year.
Yeah, I'll be sworn in in September as the president and the main chiefs of police association for the state of Maine, so...
Can't wait.
The town will be well represented around the state and the country next year, so... I'll make sure that everyone knows where bucks for Maine is, so...
But they don't elect just anybody to...
Congratulations.
Okay, the next one is fire?
Fire is next, and we have chief down here to talk about the fire budget, I'll put that...
It's all, it's all on you, chief, how long we're here.
Unless there's any questions.
You could start off with a safety building, or...
Whatever you got up.
I think, I think public safety building's the first, it goes public safety, EMS, and fire. That's how it was on mine, so I guess I'll... It's B, BPSB.
I just need to move this so that they can see that, let's see.
We didn't have to do this thing.
Public safety building. Um, short and sweet, custodian, got the same one, one and a half percent raise. Her hours also include doing the floor, refinishing once a year. We used to do that with our people, but her rate was a lot cheaper than our people, that time and a half, and our people already work enough hours, so... She does the floors and does a very good job of it. Building supplies, we did add some monies there, um, basically just to reflect actual cost of doing business. Previous administrations treated us like the town office, five days a week, and we're twenty-four, seven, so... Supplies and the amount of personnel that use the facility, so, twenty-seven hundred and fifty for total building supplies for a year for a building like that is way less than anyone around us.
The chief mentioned something about minimum wage had changed. It doesn't reflect it under the custodial thing?
She's already over minimum wage, but what he was referring to is the Fair Labor Standards Act. If you already have a full-time employee that works for another department...
Okay.
If, if we have public works, working for us, they have to be getting one and a half times of overtime of something, and they agreed that overtime of the minimum wage would be reflective, so that's, that's how Davey fell into that. No, so the, this, this is already above the minimum wage, so... Maintenance and repairs, again, uh, we did pick up a few items that, fire extinguisher inspections and testing, that used to be simply out of the fire department budget, but there's about twenty of them in the public safety building, and so we moved that over to this line, and we added fifty to a hundred dollars on furnace repair and a couple other things, but, again, seven thousand dollars for a building that size, that's used twenty-four, seven, seven thousand is, is a pretty good deal. No change in fuel, heating costs, we're on natural gas, um, no change on electricity at this point, um, no change on water cost. Miscellaneous, um, we did add a little bit to that due to the cost of elevator inspections and generator, the whole house generator we have done every year. And that cost is a little bit more, and there was some other miscellaneous costs, as was referred to earlier. We, we break it down, line items almost do everything that we can typically think of that's happened over the last three or four years, and once in a while, something else happens, so... So that is public safety, building. Questions?
Could I take just a minute to clarify? We, the public, the elevator at the public safety building had an issue in which it, um, had an electrical issue that, um, was an insurance claim item for the town, because it was caused by an electrical malfunction. And so although that, that repair to the elevator was eleven thousand dollars, was required, the town submitted an insurance claim and has already rece, has in-house ten, all but our deductible, which was one thousand dollars. So that electrical malfunction that damaged the elevator controls, um, was funded through an insurance claim because it was an electrical malfunction, just to be clear on what occurred with that, and that's... Anything related to that elevator comes out of this budget, so I just was taking that opportunity to let you folks know that that's how it was handled, it wasn't an expenditure from any other location. What's the next one?
EMS.
Ambulance service, um, the wages are broken down per full-timer in the fire department budget. These numbers are reflective of contractual rates that were approved for this year. And I'll go into that in more depth when we get to the fire service, but... It's two point eight seven percent increase on the ambulance service for wages payroll. And that's a combination of everyone getting one and a half percent, and then a step increase through the union contract. Our... The direct to salary, one and a half percent cost of living. Training payroll is reflective of the same thing, cost of living and the step increases for the full timers. Dues and travel is slight increase due to the mileage rate that you folks approved of a couple months ago. Training and hiring expenses, one thing we've run into, and it was caught a little bit during the Department of Labor review. We had several people within the community, town employees, that did not have H B series. That used to be a hundred and fifty dollars a series for three shots, and now it's a hundred and fifty dollars a shot, times three shots. And during the process, we found several of our people that have decided that they would like to, to have it because of the situations that we get into. Office supplies, increased just to reflect actual cost of doing business. EMS billing software, no change, postage, no change, advertising, no change. Uh, was a increase in the ambulance supplies, um, and again, mostly the cost of doing business. If, if you add EMS or fire or police to anything that you purchase, it's reflected in the cost that you pay. Medications comes out of this, and you folks have seen on TV what's happened to medication cost. We do have a contract through a supplier that... We do have a contract through a supplier that probably seventy-five percent of our stuff comes from. We get a, a huge discount by being part of a statewide buying group. We also look at Eastern Maine Medical Center, we can get some of our supplies out of there, and if their costs are less than what we can get them through the supplier, we get them through them. So, we, we are continually shopping for, for the best cost, but. So that's nineteen thousand dollars, and that's based on eight hundred and fifty runs, and as, as you have seen, our revenues cover these costs. By the end of the year, we, we bring in enough to cover all that. Equipment purchase, we asked for an increase there. Again, cost of doing business and some extra equipment that we're now required to carry to be ALS. IV pumps for medication, they're seven hundred and fifty bucks a piece, we've got two, and the third rig doesn't have one, so we will be buying one of those. And everything else, basically, we try to get through sixty, seventy percent of the year to make sure that we don't need something, and then things that need to be replaced towards the end of the year, we replace it with the money that we have. Equipment parts and repairs for the ambulances, slight increase for, again, cost of doing business. Some of the service contracts increased slightly added to that. Telephone, no change, vehicle fuel, no change. Contracted services were required by state law to have a, an EMS medical director, which has to be a physician. We've actually contracted with one through Eastern Maine for the last couple of years, and it was supposed to be twelve hundred dollars a year, and they had never billed us, so the last couple of years, we haven't paid them. This year, however, they realized that they had a doctor out there doing work that wasn't, they weren't getting paid for. However, when they billed us, they asked for a thousand dollars instead of twelve hundred, so we decreased that by two hundred dollars on that line item. Just a quick throw out there, he, he's responsible for meeting with us and reviewing our policies, our procedures. He picks a certain percentage of calls that we go on and reviews our run sheets. About every three or four months, comes down to our training, and we'll review some of those run sheets and go over positive and negative, anything that he recommends should be, should be changed, and he's, he's done very well with us. We're definitely getting a thousand, a thousand dollars worth for a doctor to be doing what he's doing, so. Miscellaneous costs, no change, ALS backup, no change. Collections, uncollectibles, we took out of the budget last year. I will throw out there real quick, just so that somebody might remind me, our budget readouts that you probably get, the uncollectibles stills show on our budget, so it looks like we've spent ninety thousand dollars, and we've only got four thousand dollars left, however, we've only spent fifty-two percent of our budget, so if you, if you see a red line on the next budget report, it's, it's only reflective of the uncollectibles that we do not budget for anymore, so.
We don't budget for them on the revenue or the expense side, it wipes them out, so. We now budget for actual collections as opposed to what we bill and then raise money to pay ourselves for what we didn't collect, so.
Previous administrations.
It was, it's, it's a, it's a different way of doing that, but what that does is, in your subsidies to other communities or when you are due billing, you, you're overstating your expense by a certain amount of money, so this way, we rely only on what comes through the door as opposed to what got billed.
Questions, EMS?
As you're all aware, the fire department EMS has applied for, again, for the two positions that have a three-year life through them, that would come at a greatly reduced cost to the community. And as this person who's looking over payroll weekly, the, the overtime, the sheer number of hours being worked by these people in order to make this ambulance service work is a concern to me, and if we, if this is not a successful application for us to get staffing at a free, working up to a greatly reduced price over time, within the next year, the town will have to consider some alternatives to staffing because we can't continue to work them, the number of hours that we're working them in order to meet the need for eight hundred and fifty ambulance runs a year. It's just, it's becoming overwhelming.
I already changed it for you.
One of the, one of the people you have there budgeted, Daniel Mau, for vacation hours, is that because they just accrue that many over time, and you have to?
Yes. It's all contractual, up to five weeks a year.
Five weeks?
Yeah.
So they can't go over, is there a certain number of hours before they have to staff in, okay, and they keep carrying hours over?
Vacation time, they can't carry over. The only thing they can carry over is sick time hours.
We had, had a discussion a couple of years ago about, you know, we, we have four, four full-time firemen, EMTs or whatever.
Firefighters.
And the majority of their work is under the ambulance service, so why wouldn't all of the payroll go to the ambulance service, and then the minor amount, I mean, we got a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, almost a hundred and twenty-eight thousand in, in payroll on the ambulance side, and two hundred and fifty-one thousand on the fire side. So, you know, I, I guess I, I don't know what the hundred and twenty-seven is if you're paying two fifty-one as firemen, and, and getting extra as, as ambulance.
The only extra is when they are on call and respond back. The salary for them being there is completely out of the fire budget. Sue and I have talked at length about this, and probably sometime this year, that's going to be absorbed into a fire and rescue budget, a single amount.
That would be great.
So.
One budget. Cause you're the same, that's the same.
Yep.
You're the same bills.
It's ninety-five percent the same people even on the call department. EMS budget only reflects additional costs for ambulance runs in the ambulance side of doing the business. The, the salary for the people that are there during a shift comes out of the fire department budget, but, so. The additional cost is all EMS.
So they get paid twice?
No.
No, only when they come back on a call. The only one that comes back for free is me.
That's why it'd be cleaner if it was all under one, one.
If they're working their normal shift, and they go out on an ambulance call, they don't get paid again because it's an ambulance call, they're on their normal shift. If they're not on their normal shift, and they come in to do an ambulance call, they get paid.
That's what that hundred.
That's what that hundred and twenty-seven is, and that's a sizable number for just that portion of, of what it costs.
In most cases, when they come in like that, there's another ambulance already been out then, because of the regular.
When an ambulance goes out, the person off shift gets called back automatically, so we still have somebody at the station for the, for the subsequent calls, so. Full timers work two ten-hour days, two fourteen-hour nights. During those four days, they work a day shift, they're on call, automatic call back for that night, and on automatic call back during the day during their two night shifts, so for forty, ninety-six hours, they're either working or on call. And then they're on four days off, and the second call and the third calls are handled by people coming in around their four days off, so.
Now, with, with, what you were talking about, with your concerns, Sue, about the people that were gonna go, come from the training program and into it, one of the other counselors, as well as my, had the concern about the experience that those people have, and just make sure that we still have well-experienced people on call for the ambulance runs, that was, so as far as hiring a new person might, with the experience, might be more of a benefit.
What I'm talking about is that our full-time people are, are working a lot of hours between their regular shifts and the amount of other calls they come back on for, for EMS when they're not on, but any, if the town were to get the grants for whatever, it, it isn't, doesn't have to hire somebody with no experience, it, it can hire people that, the best qualified people that you can find, but it is, the purpose of it is to add to the service so that your current full-time staff isn't coming back all the time.
They get a break. So, yeah, that's why, if it doesn't go through, I think it would be.
There's other, there's other ways that have been proposed by the fire department that, with EMS, to do per diem, to have people available for shifts on per diem and things of that nature. We've not gone in that direction yet, but that's another, if this doesn't go through, that's another option that the town could consider, to try and attract people other than full timers coming back in order to cover these shifts. We have some reserves call people who, who do this kind of work for other departments, and, and since we don't do per diem, it's more attractive for them to get paid for X amount of hours than the three that we do for on call.
Chief, is this the first time you put in for them, or did we get denied? I remember hearing it a couple years ago.
We put in, we put in last year.
Okay.
There, there's been some changes in the, in the FEMA grant this year that might benefit us.
Okay.
The last few years, the top priority of the FEMA grant for employees was retention and bringing back people that had been laid off.
Okay.
Not sure if it happened, but it led to the possibility that larger cities would give off layoff notices, put in for the grant for twenty positions, and possibly pick up, the federal government would pick up the tab for twenty firefighters, and they retain them. It worked well for a few years because of the economy. The top priority this year is creating new positions for departments, basically in our, in our seat.
Okay.
So, we, we did put in last year, and we scored high in one category, but it was not a top priority, so we lost a lot of points there, so.
Thank you.
Fire department. Everything on the wage lines is reflective of the cost of living, one and a half percent in the step raises. Up until last year, the new contract, our top firefighter step was four years of service. So, a new guy coming in within four years was making as much as the guy that's been there for twenty-five years. Last contract, you folks agreed to instituting a, a ten-year step in this coming year, and I believe there's a fifteen-year step next year that will be included. So, three of them hit the ten-year step this year. So, everything on the wage lines is reflective of that, and the one and a half percent increase. Chief's expense changed due to the change in the mileage rate. Clothing allowance was changed by ten dollars a person for a year. Dues and travel went up, reflective of the mileage. Training costs, we've been trying to build over the last couple of years a little bit better training budget. Previous administrations didn't support our efforts in any training funds. We've got thirteen hundred dollars, and that's for all full timers and all thirty-five call members on the fire department. Some of the seminars that are held within the state are four or five hundred dollars a piece. Firefighter One academies are close to a thousand dollars now. How we've gotten around that is we've taken our training funds, and we've got, I think, nine or ten state licensed instructors, and we, every three years, we hold an in-house academy. We are therefore able to not charge our people, and we also bring in outside students, that their subsidies help pay for our people to take the class. So we've, we've been able to have a, a solid training program, which is reflected in the ISO rating improvement, NFPA specs, the Department of Labor Review, we're, we're well, well above the, the minimum, but there's some classes that we simply have to send people to, and the thirteen hundred dollars, most chiefs in the state even, volunteer chiefs have a budget like that for themselves, let alone the entire department, so we're just trying to add a little bit at a time to that. Office supplies, no change, postage, no change, firefighting supplies. Most of the increase is a cost of doing business, but also, we're using more foam now. A fifty gallon drum of foam is a thousand dollars, and we've gone through two barrels in the last four months. However, you're thinking a thousand dollars for a barrel of foam, Council Rabs can attest to the fact that foam puts the fire out quicker, keeps it out, so we're spending less man-hours, and it's safer, safer environment a lot quicker. Typically, you don't get a rekindle, one of my pet peeves is watching the news and seeing a department called back to obstruct a fire the next day because it's going again, but hopefully you'll see us doing that. The foam is worth its weight in gold, so the, the fact that we use more of it is only reflective of a better use of manpower and hours.
Question on the, on the foam?
Does this state allow you to, could you bill back the insurance company for an incident, the amount of foam used? Like if a guy whacks out a telephone pole, doesn't the utility bill them for the pole that was taken out?
Yes, they do for that. The only thing we can go after restitution is if there's court, if, if somebody sets a fire.
Oh, okay.
If, if it's a wildland fire, and they, even if they had a permit, is still responsible for the cost, and we do use foam on the, on the wildland fires. If it was an arson, structure fire, then we can go after those costs in a, in a court action, but.
Yeah. Just a question.
Yep.
What is the, is it a contracted issue, the educational incentive?
Yes. It's four percent for firefighter two, four percent for intermediate or higher paramedic, and up to a total of six percent.
Is there certain things they have to take yearly for that incentive?
You have to, the EMS side for, for EMS licensing is, ALS now is sixty-something hours over a three-year period, paramedic is. Paramedic is eighty-some hours.
So that's in the contract every year, they get that six percent?
Yeah, it's been in there for almost twenty years.
That's not a new negotiation.
Yeah.
How many paramedics do you have?
Three full-time and three on the call department, four on the call department. Probably ninety percent of our runs are covered, have the ability for paramedic. Probably ninety-five percent of them are ALS covered, so. Maintenance and repairs, simple cost adjustment. Telephone costs, we added Wi-Fi capability. Out of the two grants that we got, we got computer, computers, laptops that we can use for response, for inspections, for floor plans, hazmat. And we've put hotspots into the chief's vehicle and the frontline engine so that the laptops can be used. And again, vehicle costs, no change, and miscellaneous, which in this budget includes the employee, physicals and stuff. We added money for the heavy vaccines.
Thank you, Chief. Utilities, where are they?
Utilities is, that's all for associates.
Sorry.
It's all right. I don't know where that came from.
Where is utilities? Is there a special thing for it? I'm missing something, Peter.
What's that?
Is this utilities? I don't know. So I'm not listening. No, I think it's just on the budget, but it's a.
It's under protection. That's why it's under here. And it is two items. It's your streetlight budget, which is, budget is the same as last year. And it's hydrant rental. And hydrant rental is your, is the water charge for your percent of the water district budget. And it's based on the fact that, it's called hydrant rental because the water line system is bigger than it needs to be to just serve regular households. It's a, it allows if there's a fire on, at a residence that's on public water, it allows the neighbors to still have water while they're hooked to the hydrant fighting the fire. And the bad news is, even if you took out all your hydrants, you'd still be paying this charge because it's a state-allowed percentage of a water district budget that you will pay. And that's up slightly.
And your insurance rate would go way up.
Your insurance rate would go through the roof. But the, there's a slight increase because of the surcharge that the water company is putting on bills that equates to a one and a half percent rate increase overall, so that's what this increase is.
So just so I get this right, people are paying their water bills, but they're also paying again for their hydrants?
The hydrant rental is, is paid for by the entire community, not just people, if you, it's a line item in the budget because it's part of the infrastructure of your community. You don't pay for, so, but that, that water district charge is a, it's in PUC regulation on how, what water the.
But it has nothing, but it has nothing to do with the amount of water we use or anything?
No, it's entirely based on the budget of the, a water company, water program can charge up to thirty percent of its operating budget as what they call hydrant rental. And they call it that, as I said, because it's created by the need to oversize the construction of water lines over and above what's necessary to deliver regular water service to anybody on a water line. It needs to be, the lines need to be sized large enough so that a call on one to use a hydrant doesn't wipe the line, because it's so small, out of being able to serve everybody I've had, been in the past, I've had people say, "Take out the hydrant." Yeah, well, you can't take out every other hydrant. It wouldn't matter if you did all of that. It's a, the water system exists, and as long as it exists, that this is a charge.
So you could add more, though, and it wouldn't.
What's that?
Wouldn't cost, we could add more, though.
You can have whatever's necessary.
But it's just inside the compact zone also, right? I mean, it's not going to go to my office or chief's house.
No, it's only, it's only in the area served by public water.
Yeah. But this is the one where the town, everybody in town pays for it.
That's correct.
Whereas the regular water bill, only the users pay.
Only users pay for it. That's correct.
I want to go back to that way.
They have expanded into the industrial park, you know, the schools, they have a program as the town goes, the hydrant system.
Yeah, mine's having mine's.
Okay, thanks. I just.
I know, it's the, this one's been argued at the PUC for.
Any questions on any of those budget discussions tonight?
Has, has anyone ever looked into the cost of, say, capital ambulance and maybe the difference that it would be to have them here instead of our own ambulance system here in Bucksport?
I believe we have. I don't know if we've done it recently, though, but.
I can give a rough idea of, as I stated earlier, the fire department, the ambulance service completely paid for its own working budget last year through our revenue system and our contracts. We do contract ambulance out with Orland and with Verona Island. They pay subsidies towards that. Last time we checked with a private carrier, they were talking about three hundred thousand dollars to put a single ambulance in Bucksport. They would not staff more than one. Currently, we are able to typically staff three if need be with the call department. So you pay three hundred thousand dollars, and then they keep the revenue. So you wouldn't have a revenue stream, which therefore, if you maintained a full-time fire department, you still have all of the other costs. Even if you did away with the full-time fire department, you're still going to have all of the fixed costs. The town of Orington, I think last year, ended up after, and they've got a full-time chief and a full-time firefighter EMT, that's all they have, is two people. At the end of the year, after they did collect revenues for their cost, they still paid pretty near three hundred thousand dollars. So you've looked into when the price is more expensive pulling somebody else? Yes. You're gonna, you're not going to have revenue. Thank you. And you're gonna have less service.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Any further from the council?
I just have a question that I know we'll be getting this later in the budget season, but any for police or fire EMS, anything for capital that you're looking at this year? I'm looking for, I'm asking the chiefs for fire EMS, police, anything regarding when we get to the capital spending? Think we're doing that next, in the next month? Capital improvement?
They're, they're looking to fund their normal reserves. The, the police department is looking at a cruiser purchase in this year. And I think that's, I don't think, we're not looking at an ambulance this year, and we're not looking at a fire truck.
Okay, anything further from the council? If not, we're going to go on to item sixteen, which is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
We have motion to second to prove adjournment. All those in favor? Close, motion passes.